This conference will now be recorded.
Why?
All right, I gotta go get into it.
Dude, you're my hero, you know? Someday it'll gotta come back.
There's no reason to suffer like that.
That's the end.
This isn't gonna kill us.
Oh, you have to get here, you haven't been in this place yet. Pretty awesome. Have you been?
I think I saw you Saturday. Track that. They're only incorrect.
I didn't hear. I'm like, there's a lot of things that we don't have. Everyone's had three hobs or yet? You know, so it's just convenient.
Yeah, that's great.
I mean, there's like seeds and even weird things. People didn't have different things like that, so we're excited about that. I think I wanted to thank everybody else.
Right.
I am doing very well, you?
You know, when she comes, she sneaks up.
Bring in a heavy hitter? Bring in a heavy hitter?
No, I wrote mine up.
I saw you coming and I figured Scott Hulk, I'd give him the in for him. Get that closer connection with God, you know? I gotta write it down because I do, I thought pretty much. Yeah, you gotta pick it up as a go. I just don't wanna repeat myself three times. It's okay.
Do you know what else?
Yeah. Volunteers go like this. Uh, Matthew Dave, would you mind? And it was kinda funny, it was kinda funny because we were going away before and I told David, I said, mine's gonna be here next time and I won't be here, so I'll do yours. So he's like, okay, I said, when I comes up, you do mine. Comes to find out, you did mine.
All right, that's exactly right. I got your back. I even had his when he was running down the road, I got it back.
I appreciate it.
And actually thinking of the night, I'm still old, we want to hear this.
There you go. Well, she's calling in, I don't know what she's... She said, I thought she was gonna be Kevin. Be right up.
You always say this?
Here.
Here.
Can we keep discussion? Law and Action Outlaw, an action items list, Jenny Missy each. Okay, so we're gonna be here all night, yeah. Okay.
Looking out for you.
The only one that I can help with.
The fair, I was gonna take a while, but...
Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Did Mrs. Ms. White... Just realized she was wanting to get on. Unless we get really, really long-winded in the last section, then I don't think I'll get along with it. Yeah, well, I didn't understand the house on range east and west. I didn't either.
Multiples, okay, so the S would've helped? So they just put home?
Well, now that's the name of the... Home on the Range is the name of the...
Oh, that's even more confusing. Because I thought it was home on the range west. Okay, that makes more sense.
The range west. I don't know if that's...
House.
Why are we gonna do it?
Is it on the...
I have no idea what you just said. We'll get there, we will. Yes, no, how'd you do?
Yes, ma'am, thanks.
Kevin? Yes? Oh, she's on the...
And then I'll call her on the phone and close.
Okay, so Kevin, whenever you're ready, could you let me?
Uh, I think we're good. Can you click to the right angle just a second?
Yeah, probably not midstream, we might have to... So then stretch us some more chips.
Pardon us, everyone, technical difficulties.
Your own time, just knock it out.
Okay, should be good.
Can we try it?
We're good. Go ahead and try it, right? Did you do it? Okay, I'll sit up here and do it, but we're good to start.
Okay.
I'll take your chair.
All right, I'm just saying. All right. I call this regular session of the Lexington City Commission to order. Shannon, roll call, please.
Mayor, excuse me, Mayor Roberts?
I'm here.
Commissioner Trevio?
Here.
Commissioner Dandy?
Here.
Commissioner Boat?
Here.
Commissioner White? I'm here.
She's here, all right. Brings her in vacation. Mr. Boat, you'll lead us?
Please bow your heads and pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our community, for our family and friends. We thank you for the unity we share and we share a hope for a thriving future for our city. We thank you for bringing us together on this beautiful day and we pray for guidance and wisdom to make the right decisions for our city. We pray for health and safety for all of us and we thank you for the many blessings you have given us. In God's name, amen.
Amen. Torn us in the flesh. Which is a legion to the right side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So live the flag of the state of New Mexico, the sea as symbol of our great friendship among united cultures. Or though we part, a motion? That was her name? Yeah, it's not my idea. Commissioner?
Go ahead, please. Oh, okay. I don't know, do we have any changes at all or anything?
None that I know of.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the amendment. Second.
I have a motion and second for the approval of the thing that has submitted. Any further discussion? There you go, Shannon?
Commissioner Trevio?
Yes.
Commissioner Boat?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Commissioner Dandy?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of the minutes.
For fourteen, twenty twenty-four. Second. Second for the adoption of the minutes that has submitted. Any corrections, additions, discussion? There are none, Shannon?
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Trevio?
Yes.
Commissioner Boat?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Commissioner White? Obviously, if you have something, you know, you want whatever, then speak up, hopefully somebody will hear you. If not, I'll always pause at the end and give you a moment if you wanna say something.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, please turn our commissioner staff report. Ms. Shannon?
Yes, I would like to introduce Isabella Seines. She was our new administrative assistant and I think a lot of you already know her. And we are very pleased to have her onboard. She's gonna be a wonderful asset. She already is.
Already? There you go. Welcome to, uh, welcome back, because you really have been here quite a while, so. Welcome back and at your new seat. All right, is that all, Ms. Shannon? All right, Ms. Isabella?
I know, I'm just very honored to be here today now.
I'm glad you're here. Question, question? Steven, all right, Chief, you're up.
Yes, sir. Mayor Commissioners, City Manager, Fire Officer, Activities for September the twenty-ninth through October the twelfth. Calls of service is five hundred fifty-four, eight alarm calls with nine crashes, hundred thirty-six traffic stops and forty-nine citations, seventeen arrests and one detox. Code enforcement, in the month of September, had five hundred and forty calls for service, four hundred ninety-two warnings, citations with forty-eight citations. I wanna thank you, everyone, for giving the Lee County Olympic Festival last Saturday. The Lee County Agency was able to raise fifteen thousand, six hundred and one dollars during that festival. Code enforcement, uh, trying to get your all's opinion on a couple of these different properties. Code enforcement's working on properties located one-on-one prior to like her cited, cited, uh, issued citation by the property owner. They dumped a bunch of brown water on the ground. They, you know, we had them, after we sided on, they was able to scoop it up in a big pile. We can't really force them to haul it off, to have it. Since then, they've dumped more brown water in the ground, so I don't know. Maybe a little guidance on...
Is this the trucking outfit? That little yellow house?
Yes.
Okay.
Just ask for a little guidance, maybe. My suggestion maybe was to have, um, maybe city clean it up and then...
So made a bid?
Have them go after them as far as the cleanup, because that has a...
Well, I think, and I talked to, uh, Joe Ward about that, is to get the correct person in the oil conservation division that gives out the permits for water haulers to get back in touch with them. Um, I don't know, you know, if we do that... And so if we, you know, it's pretty expensive, I don't know if we're gonna bring them back or not. But it's something I think that needs to get addressed because it's, uh, certainly not acceptable in the city. Wouldn't be acceptable out on an oil field road or anything like that either, so. So if I can track down the right person with OCD that will respond, um, and has got control over those water haul permits, that's usually the best place to get them. Because if they can put that permit on hold, it keeps them from working, it's in a pocketbook as opposed to, you know, we talked about fine. You know, they just keep paying the fine, which is cheaper than what the cleanup's gonna be. So if we can stop their hauling altogether, that may be enough to get them to take notice and stuff.
So refresh my memory, because I thought we made that like a special E-zone or something, because when that was all started, that was supposed to be a place where they were gonna have a taco cart or whatever, mobile cook station, and we made a variance or something? And then that thing burned down and then it turned into a vacuum truck thing overnight, so.
That was another issue that I talked to Joe about, could, as far as enforcing what the restrictions are in that zone.
Right.
And so there's a number of ways to go there, too. I think the first thing we were looking at is trying to get the chloride impacted soil taken care of, you know, get that cleaned up and then figure out, you know, what we're, what we're gonna do with the restrictions for E versus the activities that's going on.
Okay. I was just curious how that kind of correlated or whatever.
That's a, uh, I don't know, those don't necessarily co-mingle, you know, as far as the solutions to those problems, but both of the problems are at that location.
I think there was a brief discussion in the minutes, should be in the minutes, stating that we did tell them, no, no truck drivers in that, no trucking in that area.
They weren't supposed to.
And they agreed upon it quite clearly. They agreed in that meeting, so it should be in the minutes, if anything according to...
Right, but the property may not be to the, may, may not be under the same ownership.
Okay, now...
So that may be a question, too, who's still, you know, does the same person that owned it and previously bought it, you know, had us do the E-plan, are they still the owners or has another owner taken it over and used it for whatever they feel?
They'd still be charged with notice if it's a zoning change? Yeah, they'd still be charged with notice. They can look at it and see, but that, that is a separate issue to check that piece of property, get attention to the chlorides.
What's been their communication with the code? I mean, are they, are they open to government or has it been?
When we're face-to-face, they're, they're open to...
Congenial?
What I've requested them to do is to get that soil loaded up and taken to an environmental location. And I don't want the receipt that they actually took it to the proper, uh, disposal.
And you have, you have enough change with that receipt, have you?
What's that?
You have not seen that receipt, have you?
No, it's the, it's still...
It's still there.
Yeah, so that, that's something Laura mentioned to me, or like is going on, I wanna say almost three months already ago.
Yes.
And she has not been able to, they have not been able to provide that receipt. So their communication, like you said, it face-to-face, it says that they are willing to participate, but once, you know, they're gone, it's like two things, they just pay the fee and they just continue to do it. The interaction that I've had with them is that they are, they were wanting to change the ETZ once, or the zone again. Um, I wasn't here prior to that, there were meetings that you guys were talking about whenever it was changed into a comment. So, um, that's, that's one of the things that they had as far as the solution goes, but that's, that's as far as I know into that, that topic and that area.
There is a local company that will haul that off to the proper place where disposal, I can give you that information. Anyone who gets the statements, they're environmental, go come down, go with the issue and help. I can give you that information, please.
Yeah, I think the environmental will find it, because I mean, you can't even...
Trip over on the ground and...
That's right. Or the street.
Or the street, yeah. I think it would be beneficial for Patrick to reach out to him first. That way they're, we have a direction.
I think you asked for the commission's direction, or like, get after them. If you didn't catch that, I think that was the general implication.
Was there any other ones?
Yeah, one more. Not, not, uh, different. Our canine, after Officer Steele left us, uh, we have a canine that's been at the shelter this couple of months. And, um, Laura has a little more information on what we're trying to do with that dog.
City, Mayor, Commissioner?
Yes, the canine has been in our custody for a couple of months now, so I have reached out and Clark and I, hopefully this week, are gonna meet with somebody to evaluate the canine, to see what the next steps are, because the canine is reaching that age, whether he should go into retirement full-blown or is he gonna be able to be repurposed and go back into getting certifications for another use? And then reaching out to see where that use and who could use him for that use.
Is this one that we obtained from Paul?
Yes.
Okay. Question? I had one, you stated, uh, code enforcement had five hundred and forty calls for service?
Five hundred and forty residences, they...
Oh, okay, I was like, my goodness, no wonder they, that's several a day, just to go...
Yeah, they, they literally started one with a block and then you go down the block.
Okay, no, I thought that.
I believe me, I'm a citizen and I was told that the property on Second Street, where the Hobbs son, they did an article on the front page, I believe it was, uh, where the gentleman passed away in the camper. And there's a hole in that, it's right down the street from Jefferson Elementary, uh, Yarborough Elementary. That was even stated in the article. Um, and I was told that this meeting, uh, when they talked about code enforcement, it was gonna be, the house has a huge hole in the roof. It's vacant, it's an eyesore, um, and so, but I don't hear that, it sounds like this is a part of the meeting when we've been discussing it. And I don't hear that it's being discussed. And zoning, I spoke to gentleman in zoning and he clarified that it would be discussed this evening. It is an eyesore and it's, it's a menace because it's got that camper and there's children. I mean, there's children on their way to school. It even made the Hobbs paper. Is it gonna be on this, in this agenda, gentleman?
At this moment, it's not on the agenda. Uh, I don't know where you obtained your information at this point, okay, but just hang on just a minute. Okay, we're gonna have public comment here in a few minutes and I invite you to come up. This is just kind of a routine report for the meeting, but anyway, I invite you to come up during public comment and we will see if we can get some clarification on that. All right, thank you. Uh, Chief, uh, Police, Fire Chief, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, this is a mission, so right now we're in the process of hiring, uh, one employee that we just started with paperwork with today. He'll be put on shift, that'll put us back to six personnel on shift, which still leaves six positions to fill. But, uh, we have started getting some interest from some certified employees, so that's, or certified people, so that's good. All of the last students that we have sent through the basic class are now, have passed their national registration, so they're all certified EMTs, which means the only ones that are not certified are the ones we have just hired. The paramedicine program will kick off on November eleventh and then on Halloween...
The races did go into...
The races did go into effect, yes, sir.
The last day.
The paramedicine program, or, yeah, okay, we're, Fire Department will be a safe stop on Halloween, which is Thursday, and, uh, we will start handing candy out at three o'clock. So anybody wants to bring their kids through the safe stops, we will be one. D and D automation is in the process of replacing all of the internet in the fire department. When this is completed, we will be on our own servers, because right now we're on the police department server. And with all the firewalls and stuff, it's causing problems with our CAD, so our CAD system is not working correctly. So with all this being completed and us being on our own server, hopefully that will, uh, make our CAD system and our trucks more efficient. And other than that, I have nothing else, I will stand for your questions.
Questions? You say CAD?
Computer aided dispatch.
Because I had a whole different image. Like, why are y'all doing a 3D lift plan? What are we doing today? What are we doing here? What, what's in the engineering skills to turn on a fire hydrant? Yeah, so I was here and lost there. And right now, the way our internet system in that building is, is they try to trace out cords, some of them go to the basement, some of them go to the police department, it is a mess. So I'm literally there replacing every internet cable in that department that's going to one central location. Wish needed to be upgraded years ago.
Okay, I have one question, I'm kinda jumping ahead, a couple of, uh, celebrations, but I had a gentleman come in this past week and he was wondering, do we have a Toys for Tots program in Loving? But I had a gentleman come in this past week and he was wondering, do we have a Toys for Tots program in Lovington? He would like to make a donation. He wants to do it to all of our communities. And I said, well, I don't know, but I'll find out.
So usually the Toys for Tots, we don't do that because there's already that program that's in place. Years past, we've done like a coat blanket sock drives for the citizens that needed, the kids at schools that need. I mean, we've done a lot of different stuff. We just have that, we don't do the Toys for Tots because that's already.
I think if he contacts the Marine Corps recruiting station, they administer that program, that's where he can go. Clearhouse, who has hers since, I think, September. Hers is at the.
And you're talking about the product house?
Yes, that's the golf tournament.
The golf tournament they have, but they have early, like September, something like that. But that's, so you may reach out.
Other term, yeah. Okay, I didn't.
Yes, sir.
I didn't know who headed that program here in Lovington.
Clearhouse.
Okay. Got it. That's what I. Someone told me I should ask you about. All right. Commissioner Bowles?
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody for being here. As Robbie said, in a few minutes, we will have public comment and we appreciate people that come up and put out public comment. That way there, it helps us know things that maybe we don't know. Brings to light some things and other things that we can talk about and have discussion on, so. Public comment, we're always looking for people to come up and speak and let us know, so we appreciate that. Two things, next Tuesday, it's voting day. It's important that everybody gets out and votes. Again, like I said last commission meetings, they're got given right to vote. It doesn't matter which way you vote, just out there. The other thing I wanted to bring up, went on vacation, went up, uh. I'm from Western New York, so we went up in that area. I have a hat on from where we went because I got back and then I have time to change to get to the commission meeting, so I just came. So, but, uh, up there was nice, it was beautiful, leaves are changing. And really nice scenery and everything. And you asked, why am I bringing this up? Because we have more in common with up there than we realize. And you asked me, how is that? I understand they have water. We don't have so much water, you know, a lot of different things. But up there, um, a lot of the vehicles, uh, buildings, buses, trains. They all have acknowledgement for shopping local, buying local. Up there, there are little towns, little communities, they're like Lovington. But they thrive because everybody takes care of each other. They take care of their community. They take, they shop, they do what they can. And I know under the commission meeting, I bring this up and ask that we do that. And, you know, it has benefits for us doing that, so we need to take care of our businesses. We need to take care of what we have here. We definitely need to. And as I said, we have a lot of, we have a lot in common with a lot of other places because they're not that big, but they take care of each other. And that's why I ask that we get out there and shop local, do what we can. Other than that.
Nice tie in.
Good job.
I was wondering where you're going with that move.
I figured probably everybody else was. No, no, you see it on the radio stations, there's advertising all over the house. And they just ask that, they just ask that people do that. And that's why I asked, you know, we take.
Thank you. What's your trade?
I'm good.
You're good? Commissioner White, it's your time. Do you have anything?
Um, I would just like to welcome Isabella and tell everyone to go vote.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gandy?
So give me a second to clear my thoughts because, man, he really brought us a killer point. So as I read, I'm not one winded, but, um, and I told anyone we need to make this short, so I'll try to shorten this as much as I possibly can. So the stuff I was reading this morning was talking about loneliness and how am I going to tie that into shop local? Well, if you're shopping on online or Amazon or any of those stuff like that, you're not really communicating, making personal contacts, developing friendships. Understanding what your people in town are doing, you know, your youth center, different things like that. So I encourage you to shop local. We have a lot of new stores that we didn't have sixteen years ago, twenty years ago. But by doing that, you create friendships and find stuff and can eliminate loneliness and different things like that. So, um, take your kids to the trunk or treats and different things that are accessible in our community. Use them as an opportunity while things are good and to develop those friendships and to build a community that supports itself. So that being said, I still didn't tie in as good as he did, but, you know, vote, vote, voting is important. We may not agree on which direction we could go. He may be one way, I may be the other. It's hard to say. But, you know, vote your conscience, vote your moral beliefs, vote, vote, because it is important. It's the one thing we absolutely still have that we can do. And I can assure you, my voting record is horrible. I've never really figured out where I'm supposed to be, but, um, I vote. So I encourage you, if it's your first time to vote, go. If you don't understand, you learn. I found a great tool. Long winded, um, JPG because there's deals about judges and different things like that and they, I didn't know about it. So it was something new that I learned this year. So, um, you can go online and it's, was it JPG? New Mexico, something like that, or you can go on and see your judges' performances and stuff like that. That's something we don't know and it's information that's not, it's readily available, but I just didn't know about it. So, um, that being said, thanks for your time. Thank you for being here. And, uh, uh, the holidays coming on, remember shop local, they'll take care of your loneliness during the holidays because you can make a friend.
Thank you. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, we have a pretty packed agenda tonight, so I'll be really brief. The only thing I'll mention is our August GRT number came in at eight hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars for the month. And that would be for the month of August, came out last week. This compares with nine hundred and thirty three thousand for the previous month. And for nine hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars for the same period last year. Our trailing twelve month average is now nine hundred and sixty two thousand dollars, uh, a month. And if you recall, we based our, our budget off of an eight sixty five number per month, so we're running a surplus. And there's further details in the report that you have. So unless there's any questions, I would like to bring up Laura Brock to address the commission briefly on something. Um, which is going to come before you soon.
Thank you. Good evening again. Laura Brock, Animal Protection Services Director. This evening to update you on a recent fund that was allocated to the city of Lovington's animal shelter. The county acknowledges the crucial need to manage the pet population effectively. To support this initiative, they have generously allocated discretionary funding to the city of Lovington's animal shelter. Two hundred and fifty thousand from Commissioner Brad Weber and another two hundred and fifty thousand from County Commissioner Dean Jackson. This funding is designated for assisting with our most urgent need, which is temporary housing. These efforts aim to create a safer and more welcoming environment for animals and the community. I have been working with David, Leslie and Christie to develop long-term plans to address the overwhelming needs of our animal shelter. I will be presenting these plans to the commission soon.
Questions? Thank you.
That's all I have on behalf of Sam for any questions.
Thanks, sir. Sure. Yeah. Absolutely. All right. Anything from you, sir?
Um, yeah.
Other than the agenda items, I'm sorry.
No, nothing off the agenda, but I did want to go into, you know, Commissioner Gandy as far as, um, Scott Bull as well tying things in. So to tie in a little bit of, um, where Christie, I'm sitting in for Crystal. Um, I wanted to just, um, make the comment of as far as going to vote. I'm not sure which, which way you're going, left wing or right, right wing. And also just tying in how we start off our meeting is by prayer, is just to encourage us to pray for that direction of, of conviction and discernment to know which way to vote, first of all. Also, as far as the community goes, um, to definitely shop local and do everything local. And give ourselves the opportunity to do the community to not be lonely. Right now, we don't have Main Street open, but as soon as that opens up, it would be really nice to just see the community come together to support those businesses that have been closed for a while. And just give, give that opportunity. And to tie it all in together, Crystal, on her messages, when she emailed somebody. It could, um, her signature finishes with love each other in the same way I have loved you John fifteen twelve. And that's all I got to share.
Thank you, sir. Questions?
Are they still on? Are they going to finish when they say they're going to finish?
Oh, I don't know, but we'll see. Um, they gave between Avenue and Central today. So they're going to walk. February.
Yeah, December is not, but it's, I'm hoping. I'm blind to myself. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Are you, uh, go ahead, go ahead, Kevin.
So I just said, a quick update on the RV dump station, um, issue that you have brought up. I spoke with the district manager from Maverick. Um, they said that they're willing to, um, to handle more business if we decide to. They're essentially wanting a trial run for two months if we shut down our lift station, or sorry, not lift station, our dump station. And they just want to monitor what the increase of customers is. Because, uh, for them, it would require more hours to that store, uh, more staff. Because if it increases, a lot of people that go out there has to be monitored. So they're considering the issues of, uh, messing up the prices. So, uh, they're willing to do that for us. It's just up to you guys if that's some, something that we want to pursue. Just to. Do a test run essentially to see if, if, uh, it would be a benefit to us.
Now, Kevin, the two month trial that they're talking about, are they talking about us not?
Not servicing anyone, not servicing anyone and just sending them to over there. Um, if that's something that we would like to do, they're, they're open to help us out in any way. With whatever we want to do, um, in regards to that, uh, dump station. They're very thankful that we maintain the line for them, so they're willing to, to work with us.
I want to defer one question to our utilities director. Robert, I know you're back there. You want to help out a little bit here? The only problem that I see in this is we've started gaining ground as far as, you know, getting a dump station for our citizens. Uh, do you feel if we defer to them, is that going to be a problem to come back later on and try to? If we have to open ours back up, I mean, give us a quick.
I just think it's, we discussed it, you know, doing that for a couple of months, you know. Time I feel like it's a, it's a burden, you know, more burden on us because now we're going to have to, you know, maintain their line. Because it's not only our stuff that's going, it's everybody else's that's going. And it's going to be hard to get back to where we're at. The city, you know, we're starting the process of trying to get one built at the, at the community station, I mean, at the wastewater. So I think that'll, I'm kind of confident, I think it's a conflict. I would suggest, you know, keep it the way we are now.
We take the call, we take.
We take the call, you know, what's getting dumped. Away from them dumping so much stuff in there now, every once in a while we get the stuff that kills the bacteria, that kills this net. At least we can monitor. Over there, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know. People come through at night, you know, they dump stuff. We don't, we can't monitor anything, any of that stuff. I just think it's better if we keep it the way we have it now, but, you know, it's up to you guys.
Okay, when we, in their discussion of us monitoring their lines or helping them with their lines. I mean, under our current agreement with them, because we don't really have a, a true agreement, it's on them, right?
No, it wouldn't be beyond us. He probably would come up and be on us.
Across their property or just?
I mean, it's going to be across the property. The last time we had problems, it was property.
Okay.
A month ago.
Yeah, if we, if we have hours go out there, then we're going to have to assist them, but currently.
We don't have to do anything.
Yeah, we don't have to do anything. Yeah, I see that as more of a liability than I do as a.
Yes.
Okay. Would be, would status quo, I know you're just following up with whatever. Commissioner, what are, what are we, do we have to go status quo?
In terms of mine, I don't think, I don't deal with anything of the dump stations. It would be more, more Robert's opinion than I, or Commissioner Holt's. I, I'm just guessing.
And I, I strongly agree from a cost standpoint. I think the money that we're putting into things needs to be put back into the wastewater treatment plant and build that facility you want to build, Robert, out there. We could dump out there and that will be, that one's more in check than this one out here because somebody can always break the law or do something or tamper with it. Nor to get in it. And then, just like you said, if somebody dumps something down the line and it stops up the fuel lines, there we are. Man, man hours and everything else hours and it becomes a cost burden and it's not benefiting none of, nobody. It definitely ain't been, because we're not going to, we're going to have everybody always tied up over there. And I, I agree with Laura. I think we ought to continue to monitor until you get your facility up and running over here. And then, then we just cut that completely off. Yeah, I think, oh, from us, good sake, because people just don't care.
Yeah, I think that'd be the way to go. It's up to you guys, but, you know, it was, but to me, that's what I suggested.
Yeah, and what I was concerned about also, it was brought to me that you have people coming in here that are not local, that are using it. They're using it, they're not getting charged a fee or anything. That's more sewage that's going into our equipment that we're having to take care of.
But most of those people are probably going to go to Maverick or somewhere as they're passing through anyway. So we're going to end up handling that, but Maverick would be a burden in cost. So local people would have our convenience, out of town people would have the convenience of Maverick.
And the only other thing that I was going to ask is, would it be beneficial for us to not have ours open on the weekends? I know you have to go out there. It's a special call for.
You know, we've got somebody on call for watering wastewater all the time anyway, so anybody can go out there, open it for five, ten minutes. You know, and get the, and, uh, we've, I don't think, I haven't told Mr. Reddy yet, but we're, we're going to do our water and wastewater work in all day Friday now. So it's just a secret that I kept, I kept trying to take it.
Surprise.
The cat is out of the bag.
Yeah. We're doing it to where one guy, uh, wastewater, one water work on the Friday to kind of cut down overtime and, and cross train at the same time what we're doing. So that, that's kind of an issue, you know, you go out and open it, so it's not.
And, and my concern was that if somebody went out there and they weren't on the clock for the same, ended up getting hurt.
Right.
That's a concern, a big concern. So to me, that's something that we need to talk about and discuss on how we're going to do that. And I understand that, you know, five minutes, in five minutes, a lot could happen. I'm just trying to look out for all of us, so.
Have you, have you, uh. When it comes to, to these dump stations, have we developed a contract or any type of contract that we, that they, they can sign off? Like the Maverick, for instance, uh, what are they responsible for? Because it's just an open, open dump site and, and anybody can dump everything, so who's responsible for dumping there? Are they going to be responsible or who's responsible? But I think we need to have some sort of guidelines or, or contract that we're going to. Because if they open one, they might, two or three might open up in town, then we've got problems everywhere. This other way, I think we need to get them to where they have some teeth in it to, or some sort of responsibility and doesn't always rely on, uh, on us.
One of the big things is, um, monitoring what it is done. I'll get you put in there.
And that's, that's the thing with that, that's the, uh, if we, we go out there, we can see what gets dumped. I mean, it's just water or whatever, so.
And I agree.
Your eyes on it, see what it is.
And that's the thing with the Maverick.
We have no idea.
We have no idea. So that's a concern. So these are all the questions that I brought up that we just need to get some answers to.
My opinion, the system's pretty good, I guess. They're supposed to have a manager go out or someone to supervise, but is that supervision going to be as good as Robert and his men? No, it's from Maverick.
Right.
Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
No, you had, sorry. Counsel?
Uh, Mayor, I'm sure you don't have anything to do. I have some comments on, on the.
the, the action items, the cheese plant, and probably some comments, uh, on Second Street.
Oh, okay.
Happy to stand for questions if you have them.
Commissioner? I think you're good at this one. Thank you, sir. All right. This brings us to our public comment time. All right, uh, we take this time for someone that wants to come forward, address an issue that's probably not on the agenda. Uh, we ask that you come up to the podium, state your name, uh, tell us what you want us to hear. There may or may not be questions from the commission, uh, if there's not, just try to keep it under three minutes or so, and, uh, tell us anything that you believe that we should know about. Man, if you want to come on up, this is a good time.
Good evening, once again, just to reiterate what I, this was my initial meeting.
He's gonna ask you your name, so.
D N, D N Herrera, D E.
Go ahead.
A N N Herrera.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Um, there is a property, and that's, uh, I'm, I'm back in Lovington after being gone a couple of years and residing here in Lovington. I work in Hops, I've been in education since 2015, and, uh, there is a property. My biggest concern initially was reading the article in the Hobson where the lady stated, the reporter stated that it was right down the street from Yargo Elementary. I formerly worked at Yargo Elementary, teaching fifth grade for two and a half years, so that really got my attention. It is an ISO, it's located right at the corner of Jefferson and Second Street, and I did speak to the zoning department, a young, fine gentleman, uh, named Gabriel, who did tell me it was gonna be on the agenda this evening, and, um, and it's obviously not. But, I mean, as far as 21 years, I spent working for USAA Insurance Company as well as the Hartford Insurance Company prior to getting into education. And, um, my biggest concern is, I drove by there and there was a camper where apparently a gentleman died in the camper, and he was the owner of the property, the house right next door. Um, there's a lot of liability issues there, there's children that, that passed there, that's my number one concern, to be able to go on to Jefferson, to get into the third grade school, to go to the sixth grade school, and then to go to the, to Yargo, the fourth and fifth grade school. So, my question to zoning at the time when I called was, what is going to be the status of that property? And, uh, basically, I understand there's a small parcel right there at the corner that is owned by a lady that lives in California, and then right to the right of it, if you will, facing Jefferson going toward the schools, that is the property, that is the home, the home has a huge hole in the roof, and, I mean, working in insurance all the years that I did, that's a big liability, something happens. So, my question to the council in my meeting this evening is to see what's the status of that, you know, what's gonna be going forward, um, and surely, I mean, the neighbors that are paying taxes and all, I mean, that's, that's an ISO, I wouldn't want to live rats, roaches, um, you know, and so, that's my concern, um, what will happen with that property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the first thing we were waiting for, uh, given the property owner's demise, is some, a confirmation back from OMI, uh, that there was no criminal nature to, uh, why he had passed. So, we got that. Uh, my understanding, I met with the chief and Laura Thursday at about two o'clock. Uh, she took a look at, um, uh, what property owners were listed, um, just the decedent, and so, uh, based on our, uh, ordinance, she advertised, uh, advertised locally as well as Roswell. I think one of the occupants there, um, after, uh, the incident where they found property owner, uh, she had relocated to the facility in Roswell, so we advertised there as well as Albuquerque. All of those, uh, notices came back, um, as far as property owner, my understanding is no contact, the advertisement, there was no contact. So, it's my understanding that Laura has put together, um, a package for the council to review, to see if you wanted to address certain issues that are there, uh, either make the place safe and secure, or to, uh, pretty much demolish it, so she's gonna process of, you know, going through both of those options, to see what's there, the time it would take, the costs associated with it, and then when this council gives her some direction on which way to go, and, and I would assume it would be the demolition of that, that house and the rest of the things that are on the property, then we could start the process of the, the condemnation, so that's kind of where we are. Uh, Joe may have some other info to add to it, but that's my understanding.
That's business, just have been done on the property, no asbestos at all.
Well, that's good.
So, we have that asbestos report already back, so, couple of people within the community that have been here for a good time, has contacted us and said, hey, I know the family, but nobody has contact with anybody of that family, so we have no way of reaching anybody, so we're kind of at the point to where we just need to go ahead and just move forward.
So, and what we'd be receiving then, from Laura?
I, I swear, Joe knows that, so I just talked to her Thursday.
Yeah, I think she's gonna book together that little packet report, and she's gonna put it on the next agenda.
Okay.
And then, but she'll have it prior to that for you to review.
Okay, and I was just asking so that, oh, we can hear that, so. We are moving forward on it, it's just, there are certain steps that need to be taken.
We've, we've been on it, but we're just trying to do everything we possibly can to find families possibly that could help us with the property.
And I apologize, I was misinformed though. I was the one that told you I was gonna be on it today, but, uh, I wasn't told before.
No, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate it very much.
Yeah, just trying to make sure, trying to see what's around.
Got you, okay, all right. Mr. Kimbrough.
Bobby Kimbrough, I'm thinking of Wayne West-Pay Road, and I just want to let Commissioner Gandy, Commissioner Bult know that I am practicing in Orange Creek. This, this past weekend, I went to Tractor Supply and did some shopping, also went to Maverick, did some shopping. I think, in either year, I think the Economic Development Council for all the road, I know it takes a lot of people to bring them here, otherwise I would have had to drive the hog and cost me a lot more to go, so. I'm excited to have, have that new Tractor Supply, try to have it here, I know, I moved here, I was, it's been about thirteen years ago, the store that, uh, Tractor Supply is in, I know y'all probably know the name of it, but, but they, uh, it's kind of been an ISO when you come into town, so what, what a fantastic job that everybody's been involved in bringing that, that store here, and, uh, that's going to be back to, uh, also Cheese Plant, Cheese Plant's been up to sale for a long, long time, and I'm happy to hear, hopefully it, it won't be an ISO in the future, so. But thank you, great, I know it takes a lot of work, or each of you, Commissioner's part of the Economic Development Council, Junior, Evan, y'all doing a fantastic job, so, beginning to want to say thank you, allowing me to shop locally at local Tractor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, well, as won't anyone else. Seeing no one jump up, we're gonna be moving on, all right. First two are non-action items. First item, we'd like to ask Mr. King Jonas, who didn't, yes, come up, and, uh...
Good evening, Mayor, and, uh, City Commissioners, and City Manager Miranda, and all the other esteemed people in the room, and thank you for allowing me to share our portrait of a wildcat with you guys, this is a lot of work that the schools have been doing that I wanted to, I'm trying to get it out into the community, because you guys are some of our major stakeholders in this, and helping shape the students. I too, uh, shop locally, um, you can go check the receipts up on our St. House, picture block, and, uh, my life is a little crazy, so, uh, this is where we eat, we eat in town for sure. Um, here in a minute, I will give you our strategic plan, but so that you can have it at your fingertips. And what you see on the screen, um, is what we've been working on for about a year, so. Our theme this year for the Lovington Schools is lighting the way with hope and a champion spirit. So, we, um, initiated this model last year, uh, really talking about what a champion looks like, what do they act like, how are they, uh, how do they represent Wildcat Nation? And we also added the word hope, and I will talk a little bit more about that later in the presentation. So, we are future focused, um, how we think about our future directly impacts the way we act today, and, um, the future of our students has a direct impact on, on how they live in the present. We kept our vision statement, inspire every student to think, learn, achieve, and serve, and we worked on our mission statement to incorporate our portrait of a graduate competencies along with, um, what our path logo stands for, which is create, achieve, transform, and succeed. So, we did a lot of work with this, and this just wasn't miscued telling everybody what to say, and we had a lot of input from community members, from students, which was huge, loud and clear, which was awesome, because we tend to forget to ask the kids. And, uh, we had teacher input, and, uh, we even had some, um, representatives on that committee, and, uh, so it was, it was a pretty cool thing to have that representation. So, in building our portrait of a graduate, um, we utilized Botel for Kids, which they partnered with us, to help build a really in-depth, uh, portrait of what our students, um, the competencies that they would take as they leave, um, leave us and go out into the big world, and, uh, they did a phenomenal job assisting us on this journey. So, in the spring of 2023, the State Department came down and said, we're gonna look at our competencies, we need to, um, redo some of those, and we also are going to incorporate a portrait of a, a graduate. I said, what's that? So, I did a little research on that, and, uh, it was becoming a directive from the State Department. So, instead of waiting to get all the things from our State Department, we went ahead and rolled up our sleeves and we began the work. Um, it's a process, and I will tell you that this is not something that's gonna take place overnight, it is a journey with our students and our staff members, but we began quickly. First order of business was to develop the portrait of a wildcat, initially called the portrait of a graduate, but, you know, Wildcats, we gotta add Wildcat to everything, so portrait of a Wildcat. Our job for our students when they leave us is to either be enrolled, enlisted, or employed, and those are the, those, that's what we talk to our kids about, even when they're little, all the way up until they graduate. The portrait of Wildcat is our North Star, decisions are made from this, um, from our strategic plan, which I will give you guys, and this, so you can know what the schools are planning and doing, and it's, um, it's a North Star for our schools with hope of inviting our community, uh, to join us with a shared vision for every student in the district, because it's just not the schools, it's truly is a partnership, uh, with our community. So, the process took a whole year, and, um, it was four months in the fall that we really dug in deep and had some law meetings, and people dedicated some of their time, which we were so grateful for. We had seventeen students, uh, from junior high, um, in high school, we had ten educators, nine school leaders, the four district leaders, three school board members, four community leaders, and one policymaker. There were four meetings, and meeting one, uh, we talked about why the portrait, and why now? And then, uh, the second meeting was talking about the competencies, and we had a whole list of all these words that we needed to pick, and we had a lot of discussion, and I truly was an observer. I, um, walked around, I sat in groups, discussion groups, because I really wanted to hear from the stakeholders in this meeting, and what do they want our Wildcats to possess when they walk across the stage? And then, meeting three, um, well, in meeting two, we also identified the skills and the mindset, competencies every Wildcat would need to navigate and thrive in this ever-changing complex world. In meeting three, uh, we wanted to know what now lets define those competencies that we picked, and we picked five, so we defined, um, what they meant, and what they meant to us, and what are we going to, what do our kids, they need to know what these words meant, mean as well. And so, we kept it simple, we had two definitions for each word. And then, meeting four, we said, now how are we gonna do this? How are we gonna plan and strategically implement our portrait of a Wildcat? And so, that's where our strategic plan came into place. So, we did our portrait of a Wildcat, strategic plan, and then, um, earlier, before schools started, we also earned our economic portrait of a leader, what are those traits that we want our leaders in the schools to possess as well? So, following are the competencies that our committee came up with. The first word that we want our Wildcats to walk away with is adaptability, and this is something not only just walking away, but practicing it every day. In some districts, the competencies are really just geared towards your junior high and high school, but we can't wait until we get into junior high or high school, so we're starting even with our pre-K, kindergartners, and talking about these words. And adaptability is defining, uh, is defined as demonstrating flexibility when you're acclimated to various roles and situations. It's also responding constructively to feedback, praise, and setbacks for kids on our time, um, when they have a setback, and so, we're teaching them how to be adaptable on that, and even the adults as well. The next word is integrity. It's adhering to a set of core values that are evident and earn others, others' trust and respect. It's also building relationships while considering others' thoughts and feelings and experiences. The third competency is communication, and this is actively listening and demonstrating awareness and concern and respect, and it's also teaching our kiddos and staff members how to articulate their thoughts in a variety of forms, not just through texting, but, um, eye-to-eye contact, um, talking, and, um, non-verbal skills to, you know, the rolling of the eyes, those kind of things, so teaching them that there's different forms of communication. Our next one is critical thinking. Uh, this is reflecting and improving your own thinking, and it's also applying disciplined thinking, being open-minded, being informed, go do the research, look at the data, just don't believe everything that you hear, be informed citizens, and considering the impact on others. And then, our last one is confidence, and that's believing in one's ability to overcome adversity and to achieve goals, to take initiative and act with purpose. So, those are our five, uh, competencies that we are working on through our, through the Lovington School System. So, this is our portrait of a graduate, and we have this up in every single building in the front office, um, you'll see it in our central office, and eventually, the goal is to get it out in the community and several businesses, because we want our, uh, business owners to understand and hold us accountable to what we're trying to do with our students. Um, and like I said, we're working on this with our pre-K through 12th graders as well as our staff. As we have rolled this out, we've been working on this, and I rolled this out in August, uh, to the district, and, uh, we decided this semester, we would take one word, one word a month, so we began with adaptability in August, and then in September, uh, we worked on communication, and now we're working on confidence. So, where does hope come in all of this? And like I said earlier, is how we think about the future has a direct impact on how we live today. The science of hope tells us that hopeful individuals will tend to set more ambitious goals, they will persevere in the face of obstacles, and they will ultimately achieve greater success. Trying to teach, um, our students that they just don't give up, you gotta make a plan, what are your plan, what is your plan, what are your goals? And so, we're having our students also set goals, um, school goals and personal goals. Hope does matter. By embracing a hopeful culture, we lay the groundwork for an impactful implementation of our portrait of a Wildcat. How students think about the future will predict their academic progress and success. If they are hopeful in thinking about the future, they will be very strategic in their pro, course enrollment, and we are changing how we're doing that at the high school as well. Um, credits are earned in their GPA, they're gonna be concerned about that, and they're actually gonna be able to talk about that, and graduation is one of those goals and milestones, is to get across the stage. If we're future focused, our thinking impacts how we live in the present. And so, you will see our mission statement, um, to the, right there, and, uh, it just, it states, Lovington Municipal Schools is dedicated And it just states, "Lovington Municipal Schools is dedicated to providing opportunities for every Wildcat to create, achieve, transform, and succeed in a safe environment to reach their highest potential. All Lovington Wildcats will act with integrity, communicate effectively, adapt to change, think critically, and exert confidence in the pursuit of excellence." So where hope thrives, we thrive, and our students will thrive. And so I want to thank you for letting me share this. It is, like I said, it's a process. And sometimes I tend to be a little bit impatient with the things. But we were really talking about this with our kids. And I did walk into another school, to a school not too long ago, and the word was "adaptability." And the kids had to change their lunch recess time for something. They had to rearrange their time. And I was like, "Wow, so look at you guys." And one of my secondary teachers said, "We're going to be adaptable." I said, "Yes, you are." So we really tried to point these words out and show them, point out how their behavior is reflecting our competencies. So I don't know if I should say, "Yeah, approach the bench." You're welcome. Thank you. And there's a sticker.
While you're doing this, my question would be, is there anything that you have that the city can help with at this time? I, you know, because one thing, when you start a program like this, you've got to see the fruits of it to bear for people to really jump on board. So, you know, I know it's early, you know, four months. We just planted the tree, Lord. Superintendent and I probably have the same problem. We're not patient, you know? But if the city can help in any way, you know, please reach out.
I appreciate that, you know. Some of the classes in the junior high, you know, sometimes wait until, the kids wait until they're in high school that we're asking them, "What is it that you want to do after you leave high school?" We're starting those conversations at Yarro Elementary and even down to Jefferson. And we're giving the students an opportunity to go in and do some interest inventories and see what they want to do. We're restructuring our pathways at the high school to give our kids more hands-on. If they're interested in culinary, we have a pathway for them to go. And they have to get their core classes, but they're elected to become where they're in the kitchen, cooking and baking and doing those things. We also have an OPEP, which is an oilfield-free enrollment program. We're the only, there's only two schools in the state of New Mexico doing that. And proud to say that we are one of them. We have athletic training. The students you see on the sidelines at football games, they're actually earning credentials to leave us to have some type of certification. So our students that are in these pathways will have certifications when they leave us. So when you ask, "What can you do?", you might be asked to come speak in one of our classes and share what you do as a profession. And eventually, Mayor, I would like to get our portrait out into the businesses and habits so that people can see that, so.
Yeah, that's one question I had. I didn't even know probably if it's possible to have it located like at the library, the youth center here at City Hall, where they see it everywhere. Like, everybody feels everybody's on board.
Right.
And I don't know if we could do that here at City Hall live, I don't know.
I'd love to.
But I don't know if Patrick can. It's okay.
It may be early in the process. Initially, I can't see why not.
But you know, when they come to pay the water bills, hey, look, the city's on board. They go to the library, you know? Or they constantly see it, and then it steals them. It's like good propaganda.
And if you guys decide that we can leave that in, the schools will take care of ordering the posters and frames before you leave. That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, brings us to our next discussion. Do you want to take the lead? Is there an introducer?
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, members of the public, we often have, you know, questions about our retirement. We have not spoken directly to Para in person since before COVID. I had heard that Chief Morehead had arranged for some members from the Public Employees Retirement Association, Para, to come down. I spoke with his department today. I figured it'd be a good opportunity for them to address the commission tonight. And then tomorrow, the youth center at eight o'clock, they are going to address all of the city employees that are interested. They will all invite, we set aside three hours. So all the questions, and I know, you know, retirement questions have come up in commission meetings before, so I figured, let's take advantage. And I would like to thank you for coming down and staying the night. Giving us three presentations. So I think they plan to do a brief overview of Para and how it applies to the city. And then it would stand for any questions from the commission.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for having us, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, and esteemed staff. My name is Christina Goff here. I am Para's outreach bureau chief. Joining me this evening are Vicki Chavis and Liz Sandoval. They are our public relations coordinator, and they are assisting with the meetings that are going to be held today and tomorrow. And so I've been with Para almost twenty-one years, and I've personally been to Lovington multiple times. But I will admit that the pandemic certainly put a kink in all of our travel plans. We were actually scheduled to do some outreach right around March of 2020. We had booked a bunch of venues. We were going to do a road map tour of the state to discuss some pension reform that was coming everyone's way. And then I'm pretty sure it was March thirteenth, we all got sent home with our laptops and said, "Figure out how to do your jobs from somewhere else." So we're excited to be back in person. Handouts that we shared today are technically public record. Anyone can go to nnpara.org and find the information they were going to cover. So this afternoon's presentation for fire and EMS personnel was kind of just a brief overview. But I think it's important, because since it's been a while since we've been here, there are likely many new employees leaving the city of Lovington. And since elected officials have the ability to opt out of retirement, I think as the governing body, it's important to understand how the retirement works. And so this lovely two-sided handout has a bunch of information. But essentially, it's important to understand that Para was divided into two tiers of membership, and that both of those tiers vest after five years of Para service credit. Members in this plan who have met the eligibility receive a cost of living adjustment. Para pays interest on the contributions that are withheld from each employee's paycheck and remitted to Para every June thirtieth at a rate set by Para's board. Members earn service credit and can purchase various types of service credit. And then the backside kind of gives guidance for both our handbook, retiree healthcare, which I cannot remember if the city of Lovington has opted into, but I will double-check, as well as our self-service feature and retirement eligibility. And so part of the reason we're here this evening is to make sure everyone in the council and governing body understands which plans the city of Lovington has adopted. Because if you weren't here when the city first affiliated back in 2006 for Resolutions Committee, if you probably have never seen or haven't seen in a hot minute, it's important to understand which employees are covered under which of these plans. And so the fire personnel that we met with this afternoon are covered under Municipal Fire Plan Five. So that secondary handout that you received, you will see the plan details for Fire Plan Five. Your sworn police officers with your police departments participate in Para under Police Plan One, which was originally adopted at the time of affiliation. All of the remaining employees, including the civilians at the police and fire department, and those individuals who work in other capacities in, for the city, participate in Para under Municipal General Plan One. Why is it important to know that? Well, it dictates what percentage of each employee's gross salary gets withheld and remitted to Para. It reflects the contributions the city is required to pay on each employee's behalf, and the percentage of each employee's earnings for their tier and plan of membership toward their overall retirement goal. So for those of you who have a relative, or you personally are nearing retirement, you likely have this target in mind. You're going to retire at X percentage, or a certain number of birthdays, or a certain number of years of service credit. And so this information related to the plan is really important to understand. When these plans were adopted at various times, the governing bodies signed an irrevocable election to participate and affiliate in Para. And so if you have new employees that are being hired into your governing body, they cannot opt out of Para. They can't go to payroll and say, "You know, I can't afford whatever this percentage is. Please take less." It is a condition of employment when an individual is hired in a capacity that is Para-eligible. And so by Para's definitions, minimum twenty hours a week every week the employee is employed. If they're less than twenty hours, they can be excluded under the Para Act. Elected officials also have the ability to exclude now. Conversation we had with the fire department earlier was along the lines of, you know, can this plan be reduced, right? So fire started out in Plan One. In 2013, a resolution was passed calling for an election of the eligible Fire Plan members. And through that election process, they moved to Fire Plan Five. There is no going back. That was an irrevocable election. But as you can see, the police plan has the opportunity to increase their participation in any of the four remaining plans. Depending on which plan, if that is a conversation that moves in the future, there is a specific process for that. And so if you look at the communities that surround the city of Lovington, you will likely find that some of the other cities and counties that surround you likely have different plans than the ones that the city currently holds. The tricky part is with the Municipal General Plan. Now, if everyone looks at their handout, and I know y'all behind me can't see, but if you will humor me and look in the second to last column from the right, when we look at that pension factor column, and we'll explain tomorrow what that means in more detail, unless you want me to cover it tonight, you will see that Tier Two members in Plan One and Plan Two earn two percent per year. So if the city entertains a discussion to move employees into General Plan Two, they are locking themselves into an irrevocable process, which involves paying higher contributions for the same two percent, because everyone will be Tier Two in the future. You likely have Tier One members in your governing body today, but in the future, everyone will be Tier Two. Those of us who are Tier One are going to take our choice and go home when we're eligible to retire, presumably. And everyone in the future will be Tier Two. And so when entities discuss, "We want a richer plan for our employees", we can entertain that, but just remember that increasing contributions is only going to benefit a select few members for the duration of their careers. And then those higher contributions are going to result in the same two percent per year benefit. Last but not least, I understand from conversations with various entities we present at the Association of Counties and the Municipal League, that some of our entities that are affiliated with Para, we have over three hundred, some of them have elected a handful of different things, either at the time they affiliated, or they've done the steps since they've affiliated. So right now, the city of Lovington is withholding employee contributions at the rates you see here after tax. I'm not entirely sure what the purpose of that is. But from Para's perspective, that doesn't translate to the employees retiring and receiving their full benefit tax-free. And the reason for that is because when Para retires a member, in a pre-tax scenario, we pay them from their contributions first. And when that bucket is exhausted, we move on to the employer contributions and investment proceeds to pay the rest of their lifetime pension benefit. When an entity is withholding after-tax, non-deferred contributions, Para is using the Safe Harbor method to calculate the distribution of those contributions. So someone retiring with an entire career out of the city of Lovington, we're going to split that employee's contribution balance over thirty years of pension payments. And so each month, when they receive their pension, they're going to get this much of a non-taxable benefit. And then the remainder of that monthly pension will be subject to federal and state taxes. And so the city of Lovington, by resolution, can move in the future to a pre-tax withholding model. They have to have the appropriate, you know, payroll mechanisms in place and be prepared, you know, presenting employees with a different W two. But that's certainly something that the city can consider to lower the taxable income of their employees now. They're paying taxes on all these dollars, and then contributions are being withheld versus lowering those taxable dollars by withholding contributions pre-tax. So that's something the city can do.
Is there any possible impact to the city who would move that way?
Fantastic question. Not to my knowledge, but your finance director might want to weigh in.
It's called, "Impact to us is that we would also pay less taxes, fight the taxes as well."
And then last but not least, I know some of the surrounding communities also have taken advantage of something that Para called the pickup. So it's confusing terminology, because we refer to the pickup of contributions pre-tax versus post-tax as one version of pickup. But there's a second pickup. So my very first Para-related job was with the municipality in Albuquerque. When I worked for their plan, I was absolutely green and didn't realize the benefits they were offering me, because they were paying seventy-five percent of my Para contributions in addition to the employer contributions that they are required to pay. And so as an employee of that municipality, I was paying very little into my Para bucket, but the full employee contribution percentage you see here was actually being deposited into my bucket. It wasn't until I became a state employee that I realized the benefit of that pickup, because not only were they paying probably three times as much in contributions, there was a hot minute where state employees were paying the portion of the employer contributions. In 'oh eight, 'oh nine, we remember those sad, dark days. And so the city of Lovington, if they are looking to incentivize retaining employees, they can also enact a pickup of up to seventy-five percent of the employee contributions. So if you find that your turnover is high, if you find that you are unable to retain, you know, employees who have institutional knowledge, this might be a way to incentivize them to retain their employment with the city of Lovington. So I just wanted to make sure the governing body was aware of all the options that Para makes available to them. Any and all of them can be enacted in the future at your discretion. Ironically, many hats that I wear for Para, I am actually in charge of that process. And so both your fire chief and city manager know how to reach me if you decide to proceed with either of those options. But we look very forward to presenting to all the staff who join us at the youth center tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. I'm happy to send questions.
Questions? I have a million, so.
I'm excited.
I just have one crazy question.
Absolutely.
Has the municipality ever been unable to afford PERA and been exempt? Let's say, for instance, us, we're a oilfield environment, also get a credit. Last seven years of law, and we just don't have the revenue coming in to match and to operate effectively. Is there some plateau that could draw back on it? I'm just, just a crazy question.
I appreciate that question. So the answer is unfortunately, no. There is no way out of an irrevocable resolution.
That's what we figured.
I think it would be difficult to attract employees if you were not offering retirement benefits. There's a really amazing study where individuals moved to Alaska because they were losing people there with a 401K and told them they'd be vested at day one. And so they were lobbying in some employee and employer contributions. And after those individuals worked there for a few years, they realized that having a defined benefit plan, which is also what Para is in addition to being a 401A, having a lifetime annuity, hands down, beats having a bucket of money that you have to manage on your own. I encourage everyone who says Para, you know, is not the right retirement plan, to look in their communities. Do you see people who are still working in their sixties, their seventies, their eighties? I ask all of those people, because I can't help myself. Why are you still working? Is it because you love your job? Ninety-nine percent of the time, their answer is, "My retirement ran out. I was drawing social security for me." I was drawing social security for me, social security for my spouse. We had a 401K. My spouse died. One of the two social security benefits got wiped out, and we outlived our IRA 401K. They're working because they have to, to make ends meet. This is going to pay your employees once a month for the rest of their lifetime. We have 10 individuals over the century mark who are still drawing benefits. They've long exhausted everything they put into their retirement. And, you know, in the private sector, hmm, I'm guessing on the 401K's can't make those promises.
So just to be clear on two things. Number one, the city cannot opt out of para. Number two, the city cannot offer new employees an alternative retirement plan to para. Is that correct?
So if the city had an alternative retirement plan prior to affiliating to para, our legal counsel has indicated that they could continue side by side. However, if it didn't exist beforehand, it cannot exist now. That does not mean that your employees can't participate in the para smart save deferred compensation plan. There is a 457 that is a complement to para's plan that encourages employees to save additional money for retirement. That plan ironically gives the employees the ability to save money pre-tax in a separate retirement account that does not have a penalty for withdrawing for age of 59 and a half. It was actually designed for public safety and was extended to all public service.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So on the, uh, the different plans, because there's the three different plans. If, say, the fire department was to work with the city and they do the pickup that you were discussing, and they pick up a portion of what the employer pays or the employee pays, does that affect the other plans of the city or just that plan? Would it affect, say, police department and general as well? Or would it just affect that one plan?
That is a fantastic question. My staff hates this answer, but it depends. It depends on the verbiage and the resolution. We have some entities, especially with the pension reform that happened in 2020, where contributions increased to half of a percent for employee and employer over four fiscal years. We have some entities that only pick up a percentage for certain plans. So we have one that picked up, you know, a percentage of police and fire and didn't include the general employees. I'm guessing that had more to do with the bargaining agreement on the internal side. But we have some entities that just cover everyone. They just list the plans and all employees in all of those plans are covered. Since each of these plans, two of them have similar contribution rates, it really just depends on the verbiage. The city can opt to do, you know, one plan at a time based on bargaining agreements. They can opt to do them all at once. It's entirely the governing body's call. But the governing body doesn't have to start out at the top of that pickup. The IRS limits the pickup to 75% of the contribution rate. But we have entities that start off at a lower rate with the ability to grow as the budgets allow, so.
Do you foresee in the future, like they did in 2020, where they added the 4%? Do you see any more of that coming in the future?
Great question. So I will leave the pension reform in 2020. As presented to the legislature during the Investment Pension Oversight Committee, our director asked the legislature for a bit of patience to overcome basically the baby boomer retirement. So we have more people receiving retirement benefits than paying into para as a whole. And so our executive director asked the legislature to give some time for Tier Two and the increase in contributions, time to kind of work in the retirement system. So we don't foresee that anytime soon, but also I don't have a crystal ball.
Question, if the city was to elect to do that in, say, just the fire department, but once they go to that, they're stuck in that, right?
The pickup?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. So once an entity elects a pickup of employee contributions, it is equally irrevocable. And the only thing that changes that statement, so here. Because the fire plan is at the highest of the plans available, essentially that would be an irrevocable election forever. But if the police plan has a pickup now under Police Plan One, and then they move to a higher plan, that pickup doesn't follow the higher plan. So when you pick up, would have to follow the election moving to a higher plan.
What would be, the, the fire plan was originally at Municipal Fire Plan One. They moved up to Five, so they're staying there. What was the, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but what would have been the purpose for them moving up to Five and not be able to retire faster?
Skip, there probably is an interview.
So on this, yeah. So the answer to your question, this side of the lovely handout where the retirement eligibility is, if the city had retained its original General Plan One, Police Plan One, Fire Plan One, Tier One members would have had a 25-year, any age retirement eligibility. Now with the development of Tier Two, it would have been the same 25-year at any age retirement eligibility. By moving to a higher fire plan, Tier One members now have the ability to retire with 20 years of service credit at any age. So moving to a higher plan reduces the number of years Tier One members have to work in that plan. But also, as you can see from this lovely handout, Fire Plan One members, regardless of tier, are earning 2% per year.
Right.
Fire Plan Five Tier One members are earning 3.5% per year, 3% for Tier Two. So by investing more in contributions, it generates a higher future pension for those employees.
So I had a question, and maybe I just misunderstood, which is quite highly possible. Because you were talking about the contributions after they retired. So maybe I read too much into this. So we'll just say, Skip decides tomorrow he's putting his 25 years, different things like that. Am I still contributing to retirement after he retires from the city? Or did I just, did I read into something here that I'm confused about?
Are you asking, are you contributing as an employer, employee?
Employer.
All right. So once an individual retires, they're no longer earning a salary, which means neither the employee nor the employer are paying contributions.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
When you're gone, your person, the person who replaces me is who gets that. I didn't want to pay anymore than that, absolutely.
And he's willing to set out a tip jar for the record if you want to make some contributions.
We have a police force that'll call him off.
Any other questions? Okay. Bear with me.
Okay.
All right. Uh, I'm going to assume that the group that sat up here over the past, how long have we been employees? How long even?
Six or eight.
With para?
2006 is when we got para. And then they moved to, I guess, to Plan Five in Ju-, July of 2000.
So 18 years ago, there was a group up here, and I'm going to assume that they made a good decision. Okay? That, that's all of, everything I'm going forward with is that when it was presented at the conditions of what was going on in the city at that time and everything else, that these decisions have been good for city employees based on those factors. Okay? So we're going to start with that supposition. My question is, is there like, because I'm going to be honest. Everything you said was totally Greek to me. I'm a private sector, whatever. I understand the word, the words and the meaning of the words, but how they affect, and that's what we get a lot of, is why are we here? Why, why did we choose this program? I don't know. There's a couple gentlemen up here that have been through parts of it, but not all of it. So, and I'm sure if they're like me, they don't remember why we did it. So is there like para university that we can, someone can be fully educated to? I realize our human resource director endeavors to be able to answer these questions. Is there a, is there a way to analyze our current program, the conditions, and update it up to this? Is there someone that can help us be more efficient, better for our employees? Looking, also, where we can also, uh, I guess, try to figure out how the city can afford, but that's a good word. But anyway, you know, not put the city into a situation they might not be able to handle at some point. Uh, all of that. Okay, there's a lot there, and I want to stop for just a second because I'm going to state this because I also have a superintendent here. Financial planning is a lost art. Most, my kids and younger than them really don't yet understand how they're going to live past their 20s or 30s because that's all they're focused on. Our employees that come on are focused on how much do I take home rather than how does this affect us? So for us to answer those questions, for us as a city, to answer those questions, why is this important or whatever, we need to be educated. So back to my original question. Is there like para university that we can, that someone can attend and become extremely well-educated in?
Fantastic question. So my answer is yes, but from an HR perspective, your agency should never be giving para guidance. Fill out forms, absolutely. You need to change your address, your marital status. Here's para's form. But the city puts itself in a position of liability if they are providing retirement guidance in any way, shape, or form. Every city employee should be contacting para directly if they have questions about their retirement. But in the spirit of information, para's website, under the board members tab, has a section dedicated to those folks early on in their career, in the middle of their career, ready to retire. Our contribution accounting staff offers HR finance reporting trainings to individual employers based on the plans that they have and answers any questions they may have regarding that process. Tomorrow's seminar is a really great way to be baptized by fire because my staff will tell you, I can keep you here for the next five hours telling you all about para.
Ms. Ray, I make a motion that we, we, we've been here before. We've been here for two hours this afternoon with the fire department. We're not going to go that long, sir.
I haven't been with para all 77 of its years, but I've been here long enough to know how to find statutes, rules, all the way back to the beginning. I have the original bill that made para law in my possession. It's sort of scary. They call me the para lady. I don't even have an official name. I could have been the para lady on the agenda. It's not good. But yes, we make all of that information available in various formats. So we do information seminars. We do recorded presentations for those individuals who've learned better reading the words. We have everything in print, so many options for learning.
Sorry, I'm trying to digest the answer to all of that because it's difficult. And we're in an area where people are, the younger group. I'm a, I figure if you've been in it for several years, I know fire chief is way more educated on it than I would ever want to be because he's approaching his retirement. He's put his years in and everything else. So he's hopefully made good decisions along the way. And I understand we're not here to direct. But if we have to set out a resolution that says we're going to go in a direction that's irrevocable, then we need to be able to analyze that from both sides. And so, uh, again, I'm assuming that that was done. And I'm assuming at the time that was great. I couldn't even tell you if it's the best for, for today or not. Have no idea. But someone should be able to help the city administration decide where we are. So now, I'm going to back up the question. Yes, I understand there's plenty of avenue for one, someone that is employed in that. Whether they reach out and try to figure it out or not, that's up to them. But it also, it, when you're trying to hire, it's, it's hard to get them to look forward and say, this is where you're going to be in 20 years, when they're like, I need to know, can I buy gas tomorrow? You know, type of thing. So if we, as an administration, wanted to do an analysis on our current program, is there someone, some way to do that?
So aside from the crash course tomorrow, I would be happy to rejoin a, an individual training session for your governing body. It will likely have to be by Teams or Zoom because our travel calendar for the remainder of the year is pretty near booked. And we don't travel during the legislative session, then because folks expect us to play What If? We don't do that. And so I would be happy to join you at a future meeting, Teams, Zoom, special training session to go over the information a little more in-depth and hopefully slower because, you know, my day job requires to cram this much information and spend as much time. And so we can certainly look at it from that perspective from a governing body standpoint and look at the differences between all of the plans and pros and cons to moving between those options. So I'm happy to do that. From an individual perspective, we have many other outlines to learn more.
I'll resume. See you later. All right. Well, thank you very, very much for coming in this evening.
Thank you for having me.
And giving us this information and good luck tomorrow.
Thank you.
We appreciate you educating our employees.
Absolutely. We look forward to seeing many of you there. And my human goes to a high school in Albuquerque, and Lovington always brings the fire when he competes.
All right. Moving on, Mr. Ray.
Mr. Mayor of the Commissioners. I believe it was 2018, 2019, it was before COVID. The city was gifted this building as 2320 South Main by AMA title loans, I believe it was for. Last few months, I had two indications of interest from two people indicating they would like to possibly purchase the location and turn it into a retail location, which would produce tax revenues, GRTs, and employed people. I have had it appraised. Probably not a good idea to share that appraisal amount in public with you, but.
I don't think that's a problem, but I mean, I'm not saying.
It's more of a mill, wasn't it?
Yeah. But this is not, this is merely a, I'm checking in with you because the next step would be to go out for a bid, have a sealed bid process. Once we got the highest bid, the next thing would have the commission approve the sale. Then after that, we would have to run it by the Council of Governments and the Office of the State Auditor to dispose of city property. But if you're okay in concert, if you don't see any plans that you could make though for the future, I will go ahead in the process.
I have no interest in continuing to have unused buildings on our inventory zone.
Agreed, sir. Yeah.
I think it's already, fire has, has used, has all the practice in the bag.
It's a good location for retail, it's right by the tracks, a lot of traffic goes by every day. So on both, okay, thank you.
And we'll see if we can. Give it to someone else. Well, that's what I was trying to stay away from. But it's probably just supposed to be the, seems to be the popular thing in HOMC, right? And we'll figure that out through P and Z, so it'll be good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next discussion item, cheese plate.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that. And this goes kind of like way back a little bit on this. I was going to be short and brief on this, on this. It's the part, the part where I think my concerns were there was no transparency between EDC and the Board of Commission. So communications broke down. I even talked to our attorney. I don't even know if legal counsel was even advised of the sale or, or just to review the sale at the time. And the thing about it is we, oh, when. And the thing about it is we, oh, when you involve taxpayers' revenue and, and go out for bid and then the bid is four hundred thousand dollars less uh, than what the taxpayers put into it, sometimes it needs to be a little bit more transparent, transparency, not only with the Board of Commission, but with the public. And I felt all that was, uh, not done. But besides a point there, I felt that where the transparency didn't take place caused, uh, some concerns with me because back in two thousand nineteen, I signed, uh, signed off on a contract with EDC in regards to the cheese plant. And, and, and with that contract, it was a three-year contract. And I had a contract here with me. So, in six, in page three, section four, there's a clawback on there. And it clearly states that, uh, September eleventh, twenty twenty-one, the property, if it's not being utilized or, or anything, or doesn't meet the, of all the above requirements, it automatically goes back to the city. And that's why I say the transparency, if it were better transparency that took place, we could all addressed it. We could address that paragraph and we could just all went forward on it. Legal counsel would have been involved. And what I'm referring to also is that that's the way we've always done it. We've all got together and, and worked on a project together and then moved it forward. It happened so fast as that one week we found out to get sold, uh, next week they're signing off. And I'm like, bro, there's, there hasn't been no discussion. And so, uh, that was one of my issues. Uh, another one was, uh, you know, on, on the section that it advised, since, since they sold it as a loss, and if the city would sell something as a loss, how's a taxpayer gonna get their revenue in return? So if you have a four hundred thousand lo, dollar loss, how, you have to explain to the public, we had a loss, but yet this is the way you're gonna get your taxpayer revenue back. And it also states that in the minutes, uh, on, uh, with James's address and the address the commission's on, how it was gonna be utilized and so forth, um, the project during that term of three years, and that is also in the minutes. Uh, but we as a board of commission were never notified of that. The public was never notified of that. So that, that was a big concern to me. And most of all, uh, at the end result, what I have in front of me and, and what has taken place, I asked the, the city attorney, council, I said, would this even pass an audit? Because what my biggest concern is, not now, I think we could clean this up. We've done, we've, you know, we've had some issues in the past and, uh, which, uh, I've discussed with other people. We've had some concern, uh, some resolutions we've passed and we said, oh, man, we didn't do this or that. We're gonna have to start all over, guys. And we've already passed it, so we have to retract it, re, redo it and send it thing. So I know that, that we could come up with some sort of, uh, something that ensures that if a audit took place today, that we would be okay. Because I remember us talk about it now, three weeks after it's already taken place or a month after it's taken place. Then three years from now, uh, comes up with an audit and all of a sudden somebody says that, uh, this, this sale should have never took place. And, uh, and that's what my concern is because our books are audited on a annual basis. And this may be an audit finding or they say, it's just like this building we're talking about right here in front of us. There's a process and if it doesn't go through the process, uh, there could be repercussions for it. And, and really what it all adds up to is the clawbacks, uh, paragraph right here, page three, section four, stated that, that it does go back to the city, September eleventh of twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Trejo, does that complete your?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I have a question. Are you a commissioner? Cause I listen. What is your question in here? What is the true question? Because if, if we're gonna discuss, uh, and at this point, this is a discussion among the commissioners. Um, what are we trying to achieve? What, what, what would you like to see out of this discussion?
Okay. And what I've discussed with legal counsel is that I would just like to get our documents in order so that it reflects what has taken place. Uh, that's, that's all, you know, if, if the sales, uh, I, I don't want, I don't want nothing, something happening, let's say, we, we retract the sale and then all of a sudden there's legal, could be legal repercussions of that or anything like that. And I don't know if I'm totally correct of addressing what is in front of me. That's why I bring it to legal, that's why I brought it to legal counsel, that's why I brought it forward because everybody has their opinion on it and they, we can all discuss it, which I believe should have been done, uh, prior to the sale. And so I did seek out legal counsel and I've been in contact with Patrick and I did state to him this before the scene and what the three questions I had, what my three concerns were.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna, the reason is, Mr. Hernandez is up there and I think he, uh, feels that he's gonna have to defend. And at this point, uh, president of the EDC, go ahead and have a seat because this is not a discussion with the EDC at this point.
I, I just, uh, give me just thirty seconds. Um, I just want everybody to know and understand this. When accusations are made, like he just made in a public setting, we, we're not gonna just be good with sitting back in the backseat and hanging out and letting people's mind wander. That is a defamation of character to an organization that's done a lot of great work to this city. This resolution is very clear. And when you operate with the facts, you guys had the ability to clawback a facility in twenty twenty-one and did not. They have official meetings and have had ten official meetings with the presence of the mayor and the city manager that knew exactly what we were doing. And at any of those meetings, did they ever say the city's gonna take an approach to clawback them? The contract stated twenty twenty-one.
Says automatic.
It, there was a contract in place in twenty twenty-one. You were sitting on seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that belonged to the state.
From the state.
From the state for a contract, for a real estate contract. You could not clawback that. That contract didn't expire till the next year.
So it still, still comes back to the city's loan. If it didn't, if you didn't produce, it's still automatically.
You have the every right to do that, but not after the sale.
No, before the sale. We had the right. It, and it states right here, performance clawback. If the EDC fails to find a long-term tenant for the facility or sell the property to a company that puts the facility in long-term beneficial use by September eleventh, twenty twenty-one, or meet the job target requirement, the product, the property shall immediately refer to the ownership of the city. That's what it clearly states right.
It clearly states that in twenty twenty-one.
Yes.
Okay. You can't wait till twenty twenty-four to decide you want the building back.
No, but see, that's what I'm saying. If we had good transparency between the, the beginning of the sale till, till, till the sale, we most likely would have saw this because everybody would have been involved and say, hey, we missed something. Let's figure it out. Let's clean it up. Let's clean it up and then let's move forward.
The mayor and the city manager were involved.
But, but see, you have, you have the EDC director and everybody that has this contract. I've, I signed this contract and president of the board at the time of the EDC signed this contract. So you guys should have it on file. So when you pull up, uh, an item that you're gonna sell, you do your, you, you do your checks and balances and you, clearly it states right here.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna intervene because this is where I want this not to go. All right. The questions are to legal counsel at this point. I appreciate and everybody understands, nobody did anything intentional or whatever. So I just want to get this clear. If, if it's how we're going to move on, then that's good. As far as, I'm just gonna say that no one is trying to say, you intentionally did anything, you as the EDC, I'm part of the EDC, I, he's right. I'm the one that signed the, the original. I'm the one that came in here and I put, put the op, or the opportunity to the council, uh, which we all agreed it was a great deal. So no one's, I just want you to understand, I want everyone to understand that everybody is doing what they felt was right at the time. So Patrick, the questions are to you. I would like you to address this.
So there, there are three questions. The first is, and I have to say, I, I moved to New Mexico in May of nineteen ninety-five. Since that time, I have not seen anything really going on with the cheese plant. It has been an eyesore pretty much since. I think I went in the retail store, bought something once and that's pretty much it. So I don't know, uh, what the sales price was or whether it was sold at a cost or, or a four hundred thousand dollar loss or not. I understand there was some loss, but my understanding and, and since David's brought this to my attention, I've gone back and take a look. I looked at the, uh, participation agreement. And so at that time, that's a pretty common form for municipalities to, um, uh, take a piece of property, uh, go through the EDC and it gives the EDC certain abilities to search out potential purchasers as opposed to just put it on the market and see what happens. So that, that's pretty common. The form of the participation agreement is pretty common also. There is a clawback provision in there. If you take a look at the time and what occurs from when we signed the participation agreement up until about twenty-one, we have COVID, we have a couple of other things going on. There's also force majeure, uh, provision in there. And so what the force majeure says is, it's, it's not that the seller, uh, is not doing his or her job. It's there's things that go on outside their control that have an impact. And I think everybody could agree COVID was pretty much it. That meets the definition. My recollection is we got back together, we took a look at when the clawback provision told, uh, we were under contract. And I think it, my understanding, looking at my notes and where we were with, um, uh, commission meetings and notes and minutes from those meetings is that the city decided to just continue on and have the EDC continue on with what they were trying to do. Normally the clawback provision is put in there so that if the city came back and said, hey, we haven't heard anything out of EDC and we have a buyer, they're ready, willing, and able, well, we've gone past that clawback. Let's go ahead, get it back and, and get something done. So, uh, when I take a look at my notes, the city really didn't have a person that was able to go do that or the willingness to, to take that task on. And so I don't think anybody was opposed to just letting that continue, um, with the EDC. And so it's also a situation where, um, we have some other provisions and other contracts that we could enforce. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. Generally, how I look at it is when those issues come up, uh, we'll address them and we'll get them taken care of. I don't do, um, a wellness check, let's say, uh, on the city from A to Z once a month or once a year. I'm happy to do that. Everybody better be sitting down when you get the bill. So generally what happens is as issues come up for the city, somebody at the city lets me know. If there's something that I become aware of, I, I certainly let Miranda or whoever's in charge know. And so, so that's kind of where I got started looking at it. So the other thing that I would look at on that, and I'm gonna go back to those three questions just to make sure I've got it exactly, is, um, uh, you know, I, I don't know if we need to, um, correct any documents that would be out there. And so a good way to think about it is, uh, if, if I, um, take an option, let's say I get a first rate refusal when, when you go to sell your house. And, um, I could enforce that, I could not enforce that. There's, there's different things that are available. If somebody else comes in and goes to purchase and they, they don't do, or they do do their diligence, it may impact the ability to retain possession. My understanding is they got a clear title. Uh, my understanding is there's not a lot of other people that are out there trying to get it. Um, so I, I don't see a situation where the city would have to, uh, do anything to effectuate the transfer to make sure that the purchaser, uh, got good legal title. So it would have been something that would have been, um, up to Boston, the commission, to decide at a particular point that they were unhappy with how the EDC was or wasn't handling things, address it by putting it on the agenda and then making a decision, hey, let's review the clawback. Do we enforce that clawback? And, and my understanding is we never got to that point to, to actually review that or, or decide what to do, uh, to take some other force of action. And so, um, let's see, so I, I don't think somebody would challenge that uh, because the city elected not to pursue that. Um, and I don't know, you know, if we, if we were to be audited, um, I would certainly turn to our finance director and ask her how that would impact. But I don't think it's a situation where we had that piece of property listed as one of our assets and then all of a sudden it's not listed any, anymore as far as an audit. And so, um, the other issue that I took a look at is how to, how to deal with where we were from maybe what it was appraised at and then what it gets sold. And so the city oftentimes, um, transfers property in one form or another for what might be under value. And there were a number of reasons. The most, the most recent I can think of is the airplane hangar. We had an appraisal on the airplane hangar. I went and looked at the airplane hangar. You couldn't pay me to take it. And so, so we addressed, we addressed how, how to deal with that. We went back out and said, hey, this is what it's gonna cost to do repair. These are all the other things that are out there. And I look at it and say, could I defend that? Based on the photographs of that, uh, airplane hangar, I think I could make a pretty good defense to say, yeah, it was appraised at X. We sold it for less than X. This is what the fair market said, the capitalist way to look at it. Fair market said, here are the bids and that's what we sold it for. And, and not just to take into consideration the dollar amount, but the liability, the roof was blown off, the pit blew off on someone's very expensive plane. There, there are a lot of other things that factor in, not just the price. So I think that's something that's really important. With the cheese plant, I couldn't tell you. I know it sold for a loss, uh, as far as what the appraised value was. I think the other thing to take a look at is we sold the lot where Drylands is located and we sold it based on a specific agreement. That's a little bit different than probably what we have here. Uh, I think we also sold the lot where True Brew is located. And so the city does go back and take a look and say, hey, here's what fair market value is. Under the circumstances, this is really what we need to do. So I, I think if somebody came in and said, hey, you know, it was sold at a loss, I don't think it'd be our job to necessarily defend it. I think I could. And I think the best example that's say is, in May of ninety-five, it was an eyesore. And every time I would drive past it when I lived in Hobbs, it just got worse and worse. There's weeds, all kinds of things. We could certainly raise the issue, you know, not just a clawback, but there are other provisions in there. If count, commission wanted to say, hey, you're not mowing the weeds, that was in there too. There's a number of different things that, that were there. But I, but I think we also need to take a look retrospectively and say, were we willing to step up and do that? We didn't have a person that was willing to jump in and do that. So the long and the short of it, I, I think it's defensible. Um, if something productive happens out of it, it's probably, uh, better than having it sit. And I think you could take a look at the cost to, um, the repairs that had to happen or insurance. And so there's a number of other things that factor in. I got bits and pieces of it and so would I have preferred to hear that at council meeting? Sure, because that gets me up to speed on what happens or what's up. That's just me. And so if I get it through, uh, Miranda or I get it through someone else, that's, that's how I get it. I've got a very busy day. There are certain things to look at and I think what's important is to say, okay, from here on out, when we take a look at what happens, do we have a little bit better structure of what we wanna see on a regular basis of keeping us up to date? Because normally what we would see in, uh, public comment is Junior, um, or Evelyn, that, hey, here are all the things that are going on. I, this is what's happening. If you woke me up at two in the morning, I could probably give you a pretty good idea. I, I didn't get that. I may have missed it. There may have been a meeting I missed. I don't know. Those are issues you could certainly look at to see if we move forward. How do we address that? But I think if you, if you put it all together and said, hey, if the city's in a spot, are you able to defend what happens out there? We may not like it, but I think it's a defensible position. So to answer those three questions is, I don't think we would need to change any of our documents. Um, we, we elected, or we chose not to enforce that. We had some discussions about it. We talked about COVID. Nobody else really wanted to step up and, and do it. And so I think we just let things ride. Do we wanna be more careful about that? Sure. Do you want me to go through every contract from A to Z? Happy to do it. You are not gonna like the bill. So that's how I get, generally, when I look at something, it's because somebody on your, it's like your doctor, right? Your doctor doesn't know if you have a cavity, high blood pressure, or diabetes if you don't go see your doctor. You come and let your doctor know. You come and say, hey, this is an issue. We need to take a look at it. So if you wanna make an adjustment on that, we can too. I don't think it's a situation where we need to do anything to effectuate good, clear title with the purchaser. So I think, my understanding is they got a title policy. So I think, my understanding is, they got a title policy, and so if there was an issue, they would raise that with their policy holder and say, hey, I didn't get a clear title, I want you, title insurance to go back and fix it. And then they would may come back and actually typically get it and see. And as far as an audit, I, I don't think it was on our books, I think we could say, hey, there are some things everybody could have done better, maybe the EDC did a better job of, of keeping us all up to speed, we could have done a better job of keeping track of that contract to say, hey, here's what's really important to us. But, but I don't think it's a situation where, you know, it's going to come back to cause a problem for the city. As far as financially, are we going to be in a bind either because we, you know, have to do something, or have to hire, you know, have me do work outside of what I normally do as far as the scope, and so. Did everybody done a better job?
Absolutely.
But I, but I think the answer to those three questions are, I don't see an exposure for the city on, on any one of those three, so. Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome. Commissioner Gandy?
I just want to dispute one thing with Patrick, and that's 95, because from 96 until about 2009, I made a nice living out there, so I think your time is off a little bit. Now, it might look like it, holy hell out there, but it was functioning during those times, I did make a good living.
It may have, but when I wrote past it, leaks and weeds and...
Money and money and money and money.
It could have been, you know, oil smells funny, but it makes a lot of people funny, so that's just how I saw it.
Other than that, I agree with the rest of it, but just the type thing as well.
Yeah, so, so it is, it's a privilege for us to go back, and I know, you know, World Series, Steelers are on Monday Night Football, they all have the consideration. But, but we should sit down and come up with a little bit better idea.
Well, I feel like, and I'm sorry, I feel like it's a learning opportunity, you know, we've had several things come up being questioned. Transparency, that sign's been out there...
Ten months.
Okay, ten months. Did anybody here in during commission ever ask, how's the contract, or how is the sale of the whatever? I will tell you that I know for a fact that a minimum of two times, in two and a half years I've been here, that this commission specifically said, sell that property. Okay, so we as the commission have not reached out and kept up to date, or whatever. My suggestion is that we try to work, create better communication. One of the things that I would propose to the commission at some point is, if we're going to have three partnerships with the EDC, the Chamber of Commerce, and Lovington Main Street, and we're going to perpetuate those, and then we can throw in the, the museum if we want to, and they need places to take, or they need to have a specified time to set up. These are communication things that we can increase to help all of this, that we don't have this problem. But anyway, that's...
The, the other thing I would suggest is, is maybe invite the new owner in, because I, I think that's a lot of what, and, and not what David communicated to me as far as what's going to happen, but, but since it's sort of been out there, a lot of like anxiety about, you know, what, what's going to happen, is it, is it going to be just another truck yard, what's it going to be? And I, I have no idea, but it's probably not a bad idea to invite that person in and say, hey, you're the new owner, what do you have planned? And I, I think that also helps, you know, kind of deal with some of the issues. But everybody could do a better job on, on the next one, so hopefully there's a lot of next cheese plant, but, but there are some projects coming down the road, so, so it's important to make sure everybody, and if you don't know what's going on, or like what's going on, ask a question, and hopefully, you know, ask it here, put somebody on the phone, get it answered.
That, that, that was my objective, to, to bring it forward here, and get it all out in the open, and to have legal counsel tell us that, that he feels comfortable moving forward with this, and that, that's what my objective was this evening, to hear it from you.
All right, anything further? Let's move forward, all right. Thank you, Junior.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Mayor, are you ready?
Let's go to our action item.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval of, could accept new sign for the Denton Building.
Okay, motion in second to approve.
I don't even know what was the, a sign.
I know, I, yeah. Is it the one that started up there?
No, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, the Denton Building was built in 1964 for many years and held the city court, actually magistrate court, I apologize. So since then, it was vacant, Judge Finger moved out. Since then, the Chamber of Commerce has moved in, we also moved over Animal Control, and the city court, Judge Owen now presides over the city court. So the building serves three functions, houses three entities, it's still owned by the city. We did, as you recall, sign a familiar contract with the chamber, they put a lot of money into the building, but the need has arisen to kind of, if you look at the front of the building, it says the J M Denton Building, it does not identify code enforcement's in there, does not identify that Lovington City Court is in there, creating a lot of kind of confusion with the public. So I asked the judge to kind of, in conjunction with code enforcement and the chamber working together, to kind of get some ideas for a new sign, which would reflect all three entities. This is a schematic of the new sign that the judge provided me. The cost of this sign is $10,729.18, I have the estimate here. So this is not a resolution item, but it does alter the appearance of a very old city building. It's right there at the northwest corner of First and Central, and, you know, Lacy Six right across the street, so I just wanted the city to be, the commission, excuse me, to be okay with kind of significantly altering the look of the building. So just wanted to put it out there, I don't know, Judge, have you had anything to say on it?
No, no, there's not any question.
So just wanted to be transparent.
My question is, was this, put as a discussion item, should it have been a discussion item before it was an approval of an action item?
Possibly, possibly, I was going to get your approval via a non-resolution, it's not a resolution, I could have put it as a discussion item first, but the sign hasn't been placed there either, so you're, you're...
Right, I understand, I'm just asking, should we have had this discussion?
Well, I'm a little, that's the reason I can't stop whenever we started this, I really don't know what we're approving. Are we approving the concept of the sign, are we approving the manufacturer of the sign?
Just the aesthetic, you know, the judge is comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it, the chamber is, I wanted you to be comfortable with it. Obviously, the cost is not something that, you know, we've come to the commission approval level, it's just basically, since it impacts a city building in a significant way, I didn't want to just do it on my own, you know, and then judge and chamber, you drive by there next Tuesday, oh, they got a new sign, and Brad didn't tell me about it. So it's, you know, in time to modify it, change it, if someone has an objection.
I think it's ugly. I'll put it out there.
Where's that Wildcat sign?
Do we have space for that on there?
Extra space?
We don't have any, we don't have any available, that's for sure.
Right now, we're having problems with the roof.
It's a little bit blue though.
I mean, we can tell all the sign to go back to the drawing board, that's the purpose.
It's just, it's very simple, very simplistic, and, you know, for 10K, I mean, I guess, you know, I don't know.
We'll go back to the drawing board. Well, how about this, we'll come up with three designs, and put it as a discussion item in a future meeting.
Let me ask this also, because, I don't want to say it, but I'm going to say it, Chamber of Commerce is not a city entity.
Right, but they have a long-term commitment, they're five years, so I don't think they're going anywhere soon, but, and maybe we could, we could get a sign that could be, I don't want to say with those little plastic letters, but something that could be...
I understand, I understand, I'm just...
Yes, yes, sir.
Shouldn't it say something about it being the Denton Building?
Well, that is still beyond the wall of the building.
On the wall building?
Yes, sir, it's pretty, it's pretty clear.
Do we really care? Huh? Do we care?
I do.
Do you really?
Okay.
I don't care how much in life, but...
We didn't want to alter that wall where it says J M Denton, so this is kind of scandalous.
You know, I kind of like, agree with Commissioner Bowe, I think the chamber needs to be on a separate bracket on it, and, and the only reason why is, I like what the chamber does, but everybody always kind of like blames us for, for what the chamber, what, city doesn't know, well, that's the Chamber of Commerce, and they don't understand it. Sometimes they don't understand, I know they'll never understand it.
We can just point to the county.
Well, there's one option, so they, the chamber is already installed very, to me, it's beautiful, it's a rock, and has Chamber of Commerce, so they were going to volunteer to back, because they were part of the building, and kind of showing where the chamber is. We could just put signs to show the two city entities, the municipal court and code enforcement, I mean, that's possible as well.
That's the way we should go, because I, I, not, I mean, I think we, we help the, the chamber, we, you know, give them, but, but I think there needs to be a separation. I, I would feel more comfortable, I mean, it's up to the board, or to...
Does it go to the board?
Yeah.
This is ugly.
But we'll come back with some more options, we'll, we'll look at it, because some of the signs have two signs, you know, just right off, and then the bottom, just...
Okay. Got the, all right, I know, hang on, I got it. All right, Shannon, vote call, please.
Commissioner Bowe?
No.
Commissioner Cory? No. Commissioner Gandy?
No.
Commissioner Gandy?
It's ugly, no.
No, and make sure the minutes re-play.
It's ugly.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2024-100, approval of Home on the Range West subdivision. Okay, I'll watch you in a second to... Okay, to approve or consider this resolution.
I have Brenda Gomez on, on the phone, actually unable to be here physically, but I'm going to go ahead and pretty much read both for resolution, what can I do that, can I get someone to do that? Okay, never mind. So the first one will be is, the subdivision falls within three mile radius of the city limits, and is required by state law to be reviewed and signed off on by the municipality and the county. City code requires also divisional to planning and zoning, and then onto city commission. Owners are dividing this tract of land into five various lots, from 4.04 acres up to eight acres. Owners will have to abide by all county regulation on the leisure road, turnaround area, and setbacks. And like I said, I have Brenda Gomez on the phone, if y'all have any questions, she will do an answer.
Okay, so we got properties, two and a half miles outside the city limits, it's outside the ETZ, why is it even here?
They had to advertise it, they had to put it up for advertisement, doesn't matter if we, yes or no, but...
I think part of it is that, because of its location, you know, you think about where the city limits were.
Oh, because the... We got those new city limits out there in the middle, it's down in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, and so they just want to make sure that if the city is moving in a certain direction, that for economic development, or whatever reason, we don't stop because there are subdivisions or other uses on that land that don't really match with what we are. So, so part of the reason, I mean, it's state law, and the reason it's state law is that, you know, we can look at it and say, hey, if we wanted to, you know, annex another six miles out, maybe, and increase whatever, homes, businesses, we would, you got some input in how those homes, businesses, subdivisions, whatever it might be, put together.
That rubbed me wrong, I'm sorry. Because... You said it right, it's just rubbed me wrong, because we fight with the county over this stuff all the time, and they do whatever they want to do, even though it's in our ETZ. I'm sorry, I got my box, so, all right.
Subdivision, no, for recommendation from the planning and zoning commission, approve this subdivision on last...
And looking at the map, just briefly, so that I get a good understanding, because we incorporated into the city our industrial park area, this is two point, well, it, it's a distance from that industrial park area, somewhere two point six four miles, literally out in county, and that's the only reason it's really came, it's come for this commission.
Because it's within the three miles of the margin of where I can see.
Okay, just make sure I understood this. All right, any further discussion?
And this is going to be a housing development type deal, or...
That's why they showed it in here.
Subdivision divided up into, I can't really see that thing.
Going to be Buffalo Road, I guess it's going to go right down the middle, and there's going to be two blocks. Shannon?
Commissioner Cory? Yes. Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Never happy, but yes.
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2024-010, approval of Home on the Range East Division.
Okay, motion in second for this. Any further discussion before we... I'm looking just the other side. Shannon?
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Still unhappy, yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2024-01, variance request for carport side yard setback at 615 West Adams Avenue.
All right, motions. Okay, motion in second. Gabriel, is this yours?
Yes, I will present this as well, the client's part here, I think, there's not necessarily, but I'll just hand it up, if there's any questions at the end, then I'll actually go over to the question here. So owner requesting a variance for a side yard setback for a 20 by 20 carport, it will be a wooden carport along the east side of their, their yard line. This is being requested so that the posts of the carport will line up with the existing garage opening, and to be in the same side way. Now, it's going back, and the planning and zoning commission approved this item on the 15th of October. Basically, she's only requesting this setback just because it's not, it's already purchased, and the way it was said, typically, we already went out there to site visit and everything. It meets the setbacks as is, as far as the size goes, but because of the structure, it would block the entrance to garage. So they're just requesting to move it the five feet to the west of the property, which would leave them with no side yard setback, and we did, like usual, allow the neighbors to check in on this, if they had any concerns, and their neighboring, their neighbors had no, no objective to it, so we did not see any danger in going ahead and allowing them to do it with the rejection too. Like I said, if you guys have any questions for them directly, they'll be the ones who laughed.
I'd like to see if Mr. Price was here, he's just not here. Did you attend that meeting?
I didn't.
Okay, they're usually pretty stringent on...
The reason why is, it's wooden, it's, it won't be as...
Wooden? I'm sorry, I was trying to figure out that word, I'm, nah, wooden, okay.
Made of wood.
Catch it. I was waiting the first time, and I was like, oh, well, that changes everything. Okay, sorry, yes, sir.
And, and they just didn't see a really big issue with it as far as the setbacks, it's not approaching the city property or easement, which is one of the factors why we would want to typically, this is just mainly with their neighbors, that would be the biggest concern, and they have no concern at all.
All right. Any further questions? Shannon?
Commissioner Trivio?
Yes.
Commissioner White? Commissioner White?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
No. Yes.
Well, had he gone the other way, whatever you did.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, let's move forward. I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one, approve new bank account for CBBG project number twenty-three dash C dash NR dash I dash O three dash G dash O three. We have a motion in a second. Uh, oh, I am so sorry. You weren't there when I looked down.
Okay. What this is, is CBBG, another housekeeping items. We need a non-interest bearing deposit only account. We are not going to be getting. To it. We are not going to find money out of it. We are just using it for reimbursements for our ADA sidewalk project. That's it. Has to be non-interest bearing. We do not have a non-interest bearing checking account at this point that is capable of this. So.
Well, I'm gonna ask a silly question because the way you started that, there's not going to be anything put in it. There's not going to be anything taken out of it.
Right. It's just a reimbursement from the federal government. We send in a request for part of the project. They sign off on our request for reimbursement. They put the money in there on our reimbursement, then we immediately have to transfer it out of that bank account into, uh, back into our general fund or our project. So that's it. We still need two signatures to sign off on our request to the, uh, to the feds for the money. Um, and it has to be non-interest bearing because we cannot make interest, uh, off our federal.
Off federal money?
Right.
Can't just let it sit there. Questions? Shannon?
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trevio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Thank you as well. Appreciate it. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to accept a million dollars from the county.
No, oh wait. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the resol, most of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one zero four, accept one million dollars in funds from Lee County for the Veterans Memorial Project. Okay, I'll watch you in a second for this one. All right, consideration of this resolution.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, as we continue to move forward on the Veterans Memorial Project currently, where we stand with funding or ha, did stand was we have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars left in capital outlay funds. The city has budgeted two hundred thousand dollars this fiscal year towards the memorial. Costs continue to escalate monthly. The latest, uh, the, the memorial has a phase one and a phase two. We were looking at a greatly scaled down phase one. Um, the Jeff Stewart from Plan Collaborative and I presented before the county commission to update them on the status of things about two or three months ago. Um, they were. Have chosen to give us, uh, one million dollars towards it. Take our funding up to one point six five million dollars. This includes the acquisition of the last remaining house there. Um, and doing pretty much the whole project, phase one, phase two in one shot. And I would recommend that we accept this very generous, uh, donation from the county.
So with this money here, we hope we have also, that will complete the total project.
Yes, sir. Although, you know, so the two things holding it up were, uh, the architect getting a, a subcontractor for the construction, which I believe they had everything except the electrical quote. Um, and then the acquisition of the small house. We can start it without the acquisition, but where that is, is he has liens on the house. They're getting a payoff amount from the IRS so we know what all to pay to, to get the house to tear it down. So we're at the finish line.
Okay.
All right. Any others? Okay, Shannon?
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Trevio?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one zero five, approve MOU between Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management State Fire Marshall Office in the City of Lovington. All right, I'll get that in consideration.
Yes, sir.
My name is Matthew Reggee from the Department of Fire and Inspector for City of Lovington Department. Uh, what this is, is basically an agreement between State Fire Marshal Office, Department of Homeland Security. Um, in that they allow us or we just to have cooperative agreement to do inspections in the city. Uh, that allows the city to do investigations or inspections done in a timely manner, a lot cheaper. Right now, the state only has four inspectors. So in order for new businesses to come in, they have to call off the state. We can do that here. Let's just allow them to have this agreement to say that we're on agreement, agreements with those terms. Do that for them.
Okay, questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Mr. Bowe?
Thank you. On page three. Says fire code enforcement inspections accepted, uh, following code enforcement activities. So please select all that apply. There's four boxes and none of the boxes are checked. Is that?
They were checked online. Yeah, they were checked. They should be, the, the bottom three should be checked.
Yeah.
Are they checked on your skin?
They're not on me. On, on this, they're not.
Yeah, on here, they're not yet.
We worked in the paper areas that we had.
Yes, the bottom three should be checked.
So that's why I just wanted to make sure.
Bottom three were checked.
Make sure they're checked before you sign them forward.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just, anything I saw, same as you, they were just blank.
Right.
Just like, okay.
Yep. So pretty much what this is just saying is that a lot of times these businesses, when they come in and they build a business. They may wait on the state for two months before the state can get her down here and do an inspection that we could do as the fire department, because all it is is the fire code safety inspection is what we're doing. So what it is, is to help these businesses come in and pretty much help expedite the process and we're helping the state and in turn the state, if we need them, of course, they'll come in and help us for anything we need as well.
Yeah, there's the state inspector that came and helped. So the tractor supply, they re, they, the state inspector, they come and they spring first. If he didn't get the day that he was here, it'd been three months before he was gonna, might have been setback, tractor supply from open.
And the only reason I bring that up is because I want to make sure that whatever boxes need to be checked before we do this, they are checked.
They are on the original.
Okay. The bottom three, not none, is, I'll take it in a minute, so.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Shannon?
Commissioner Cory?
Yes.
Commissioner Trevio?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes. Dave, I need a, uh, motion to. They start to consider the finance report and the council paper.
Make the motion. Finance report and the council paper. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All right. Um, I know she's on the phone. Is she going to answer any questions? She was available. But she's not gonna go through the financial.
It's up to you. If you need me to, I can go through stuff real quick.
Well, I, that was, I don't know. I didn't know what you were prepared to do or whatever, so.
Um, I mean. We're, um, at twenty-three point five percent on revenues, uh, only running about seventeen percent on our expenses. So that's looking good. Of course, we still have a big capital, it's not quite a bit presented that we'll be spending in capital projects still, so. That also has a little bit to do with our lower amounts, but, um, most departments are looking. Looking really good. Versus, um, actuals versus their budget and seeing if there's any adjustments we need to bring before the commission. In the next couple of months.
Anyone have any questions?
Great. And cash is also looking really great, so.
Did, did we ever address that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, issue I brought up the other day? I, I couldn't remember. There's a number that was not correct. And it was gonna be corrected and I probably was.
I'm like, that's something, dude.
I don't remember. I thought you, I was looking at you.
I have no.
It was for the grant.
It was a grant.
She's somebody. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it was a grant. It was, what was it, Joe? Oh, the grant for the, okay.
Yeah.
Was that correct? Oh, it's in the negative. It showed it in the negative.
Oh, we're right in the last.
We're trying to figure out why it was in the negative, why it was. And I think that was supposed to be. Yeah.
Anyone else? Is there any further questions on the finance report? Or now on the, uh, council paper?
I just have two questions, David, and you can probably help me out, but they are, I just want to know what they are. First page, there's Tiju metals, stealth panels for wastewater. Do you happen to know what them are?
Those would be arc panels for the buildings that we're requesting. We've got about a put up on the bottom, rusted out. It's corroded, so we go to the panel from the base, uh, of three of the four buildings.
Are they, are they metal? What are they?
It's arc panels, metal. Fourteen gates.
Okay, okay. The other question I had was the Alver Trays from Senior Center. Uh, Alver Packaging and Equipment Company, page six.
Yes, I have.
That was, um, they, they was replacing, um, a lot of different trays and different things that they use, um, and some of it is also for the new vehicles.
Yes, I figured they were for the vehicles, but I don't know if they were or not, if they were something inside, but that's, they're for the new vehicles?
Yes, some of them are, and some of them for the kitchen as well.
And this also?
Can't be in a case of. Dragging L P.
We're good. Let's roll.
All right, you had your question, bro?
Yes.
All right. Uh, Shannon?
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trevio?
Yeah.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Thank you for that. Uh, we are gonna be moving into closed session. We appreciate everyone that came tonight, stayed through this, uh, walking me back to the next meeting. Commissioner Gandy? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, something we haven't been into for a while, closed session pursuant to section ten dash fifteen dash one, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight subsection. H two regarding limited personnel matters. My name's. Second, motion in a second to move into closed session.
Shannon?
Hey, it's me. I'm gonna put you on.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Trevio?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
She may already be gone, so.
Oh, yeah. So, he says yes.
He's already killed her.